Good evening. Let's open the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as usual, we'll begin our meeting with an invocation. Those who would like to bow with me will pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we seek your blessings on the task before us tonight. Through your guidance, give us wisdom to focus on our actions on the best interest of our citizens. Please give comfort and healing to all that have and will be in the path of Hurricane Dorian. I pray that we will all pull together to support those in need. Please give special protection to the military, police, firemen, and EMS that risk their lives to ensure our safety. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In thy name we pray. Amen. Mr. Rushing, if you'll...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have with us tonight Fred Porter and Troop 89. And Fred, if you'd come up and introduce your boys and have them lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right here at the microphone there.
This is Trey Bozeman, Ryan Porter, and Peyton Crowley.
You've got one more.
And this is Will. What's your last name, Will?
Prevost.
Prevost. All right, we're going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Who'd like to start off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we'll have our informal comments. And each speaker must address the board for the lectern and begin with their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are resident of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. And we have one person sign that. Ms. Loretta?
Thank you. Loretta Milançon, resident of Monroe here in Union County. I wanted to do a little educating tonight and also to introduce myself to you all as the litter queen. That's why I've worn my crown. The Monroe Council, City Council, is aware of my authority. Anyway, what I wanted to do, I've got for each of you a brand-new brochure that tells what we've accomplished and what we hope to accomplish. And for everybody that's here, there's a way to swat a litter bug. Has anyone ever heard of that, swatting the litter bug? It's really easy to do. I'm going to leave some of these cards. There's an 800 number to call. Everybody's in traffic probably at least once or twice a day. If you see someone in front of you, flick that cigarette butt, throw out the fast-food container, whatever. They can be reported very easily to DOT, and they will receive a letter saying, "You were seen littering such and such a day, such and such a place." And they will receive, it's really too nice of a letter, but it just makes them aware that we're paying attention, and they're not going to get away with this much longer. So I will leave some of these where anyone in the audience or otherwise can have them, and I'll leave this packet for all of you commissioners. And thank you very much for everything you've done to support litter busters.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, the additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda. Do we have any?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we move item number 15 from the consent to the regular agenda, please.
We'll move that to item 22A.
And we could also move item number 11.
22B. Okay. Anything else? Motion to approve as amended?
Back to motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion?
As amended, I'm sorry.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is an update on our convenience site revenue collection.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm glad to be here this evening to provide you with some information regarding our convenience site fee collection process. And what I wanted to do real quickly for you is provide you a list of some milestones over the last eight or nine months, just to kind of jog your memory of some presentations that we've done and also some things that have been accomplished over that period of time. So if you follow along with me, the two presentations that were provided. End of last year in December, John Eivars went over our overall solid waste program and gave you information, everything from curbside collection to recycling, and how our contracts work throughout Union County. And then I came back to you in April of this year to provide you with some information with regard to our convenience site fee collection process and how we currently collect our fees through cash, cash process, at which time the board directed that we move toward a receipting process as our most cost-effective way and efficient way to make sure that the money that is received at our convenience site is collected and deposited by transaction. Since that time, some things that have occurred that I wanted to make sure you were aware of, that we successfully closed our Sun Valley Convenience Site on May 31st and then started the process after we designed the receipts, which I will share with you in just a second. We ordered the receipt books for all of our convenience sites. We also started the process of reviewing our solid waste ordinance for the county that has not been done in some time. All of the associated departments, along with our legal staff, were involved in that discussion, and that continues on. I think we've got another meeting set up for next week to continue that process of revising our solid waste ordinance to bring it up to current date. We received our receipts on August the 14th and started implementation of those at all of our convenience sites on August the 20th. And I will share with you that in our first week of issuing receipts at our convenience sites, we issued over 3,000 receipts, which is significant in the fact that all but our Austin Chaney site are only open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, so three days a week, plus the Austin Chaney operation. We had 3,000, over 3,000 receipts that were given out during that period of time. So it gave us a little bit of an indication of what we could expect in terms of moving forward. And then in addition to that, you'll see on your agenda this evening, I think in the consent agenda, our first contract associated with the Gold Mine Road Convenience Site construction. This first portion of that deals with the grading on the site as well as the concrete work associated with the pad that will house the four compactor units that will be on that site. So we're starting that process now, and we've got to bring online, you will see, come before you, an electric contract to do all the electrical work and then some fencing work subsequent to that. So we're moving along to get that convenience site stood up. Just to share with you very briefly, the receipts that we are issuing now, we wanted to make sure in the design process that we made it as simple and quick for our tenants that work at each one of those convenience sites. So you'll see here, we broke down the way that we charge our fees, whether it's MSW, CND, or yard waste, in a way that would allow our tenants just to simply check off a box and make those calculations for them, so it's easy for them to check the box, fill in the total amount, and hand it to the customer while they're depositing the material that they're bringing to the site. That is Austin Chaney. This is what the receipt looks like for our regular convenience site, again, making it easy for them to check the box. The calculation mathematics is already done for them. Make it simple, make it quick for their benefit as well as for the customers. Then they fill out the total and hand a copy to the customer, and then they keep a copy with the book, and then a copy is turned in for reconciliation with our convenience supervisor, convenience site supervisor. Wanted to share with you some of the costs associated with this process. What you'll notice here is most of this is associated with our cash handling process, the fact that we handle cash, we have to verify deposits, we have to collect all those deposits. There are some costs that are associated with that. So we want to give you an idea of what that part of the cash collection process looks like, but also you'll notice in there in the cost of receipts, reconciliation of receipts, those are costs specific to the receipting process that we go through now in order to make sure that we're accounting for those funds that are deposited. And you'll see there generally what that particular process takes for us. And then finally, some considerations, I guess some of this is a little bit lesson learned, what we've learned over the past week, is it does take us a little bit more time to go through the process because we are handing receipts out. Customers are busy making their deposits of their material, and they're not really as anxious to get the receipts. They just want to drop their stuff off and be gone. So we found that about 95% or better of our customers don't want the receipt, they don't take the receipt. We do know that the receipts are being made out because we get those receipts to reconcile our deposits to, but they just want to get in and get out. But we do have the receipt that we keep. One of the things that we are continuing to evaluate is the cost-benefit of this receipting process. I know that's information that y'all would like to have, and we want to make sure that we can provide you with all the information that we can, but looking at the cost-benefit of what we potentially can lose versus reviewing those costs again, what it cost us to go through that process. So that's a policy decision, but we want to make sure that we're giving you the information that you need to make those decisions. So just briefly, wanted to come up and share that information with you. I know y'all have got some questions and have had some questions that you posed to the manager, and if there's anything that we can answer, more than happy to do that and kind of share with you the experiences over the last, I guess it's two weeks now of receipting.
Yes, I'd like to ask, have you looked, there is a, and I've seen in other venues, like iPad, that has like your receipt where they enter five bags, it does multiplication for them, tells them what it is, but they have a printer that hangs on their belt, and it has a main copy, but it has a receipt copy you turn off and hand. Did you look at the cost of something like that?
We have not evaluated other systems. We did share those, I think, during the April 8th meeting, that we had that discussion about the different types of methodologies. So we know that there are methods out there, but in terms of a deep dive into what those look like, what those may cost, or, you know, any of the specifics, we haven't gotten into that level of detail at this point.
Mr. Chairman, some of our convenience sites have very limited internet accessibility, so that does limit our options when it comes to electronic use.
Well, my understanding is that's Wi-Fi between the two devices only.
Yeah, as long as it is not internet-dependent, web-based...
It's not internet. That's my understanding.
That would be the biggest issue that we would deal with, those remote sites.
Understanding, just wanted to make a clarification. There are a number of different methodologies, and a number of them require internet connectivity.
Okay.
Jeff, I was asked to add this to the agenda, and there is, I guess we would like for y'all to come back to us with some possibilities on cashless transactions, and maybe that can incorporate what Commissioner Hales just said. I don't know that y'all, you know, I know y'all would decide the best thing to do. There was some confusion about we'd already gone cashless, so if you could look at that and then get back to us when you come up with some ways.
Yes, sir. We'd be more than happy to research the different products that are out there and, again, provide y'all with the information to make the decision as to how you'd like for us to move forward.
Do we have a landline telephone at each collection site?
No, sir.
Would that be a possibility of where the information could come in?
Well, I think to Manager Watson's comment, as long as it's not cloud-based, internet-dependent, if it's a system where it's within a module that we can then download information, you know, it doesn't take away from the fact that some of those costs associated with the cash system, for instance, having the tenants come back to this building to download that information and those kind of things, you know, we wouldn't avoid that part of it, but certainly there, I'm sure there are systems out there that we can evaluate and give y'all some recommendations based on those particular types of cashless systems.
It was also stated possibly towards the end of a heavy day, the safety of the operator with the cash and...
Chairman. Commissioner Simpson, question? Thank you. Jeff, is there any requirement on the number of staff to be on-site?
Generally, at the remote locations, we're at somewhat of an advantage right now because with the closure of the Sun Valley site, we have some additional personnel, so we've been able to have two attendants at our busier locations, Piedmont and Parkwood, I believe, you're correct? Parkwood. So right now, while we're still building the Gold Mine facility up, we're able to have two attendants. Generally speaking, we have one attendant at each one of those locations.
I'll do tell you what Commissioner Ray mentioned. That is my means of disposal. I don't have curbside pickup, so it appears to me we added another step for that attendant that requires his attention, his or her attention. And I'll just use an example. Late Saturday afternoon, within an hour of closing, and you can imagine, everybody's trying to get their garbage to the dump before it closes so they don't have to live with it over the weekend. The attendant is counting bags, trying to determine how many bags you have, trying to write a receipt for those bags, and his attention, his or her attention is pulled away to do that. There's opportunities for miscounting on the bags, there's opportunities for, almost had an accident with cars coming in there from all different directions. So I know early on, back in about 2010, this issue came up, and we actually talked about having bags printed, you know, a county bag, and I think that, the more I think about it, it potentially could work, but I think we probably need to look into that opportunity for a cashless system sooner rather than later. So I appreciate that.
Any other, Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you. There are some counties that you have a tag on your car, or there's other ways of doing it, it's paid through other means. With those, have we researched many of those and seen if that's a possibility for Union County?
I believe that generally is those that are dealing with solid waste availability fee of some application where they pay an annual fee upfront, and then they either get a sticker or some way to denote that they have paid that fee, annual fee. So it's those, I think we shared with y'all, 61 counties that have some form of solid waste availability fee. That is how they implement it. And each county that does that does it in slightly a different way, so that may be what you're referring to is paying that annual fee, and then they get a sticker, much like we give our commercial haulers. We give them a sticker to designate that they've paid their fee upfront, and then it's available for them to make their deposits.
Because I think, you know, even with the litter busters, I think they would appreciate this. I mean, what happens is, I think, sometimes you get a family who maybe, as bad as it seems, you know, throwing the trash away is an expense they're not willing to pay, so it ends up on the side of the road, or it ends up in their backyard or beside their house or something. So maybe, you know, coming up with something that we just either have a prepaid or, you know, figure out some way of doing it where we just pay for the service, you know, pay for that for our taxpayers. We may need to look at that. What's the total budget for public works, I mean, for the solid waste?
For convenience sites, we generate about $847,000 in revenue off of, it's primarily from Austin Chaney. I think it was, we were in the, was it 500-plus range for Austin Chaney?
560,000 and after.
And the remainder out of the other five convenience locations.
And versus expense?
Yeah, it's about 5, 60,000.
Yeah. We generate revenue off of our convenience site operations.
Okay. So it's something maybe we can afford to look at, rather than trying to generate much revenue with it just as a service to our taxpayers, maybe providing. And, you know, I can see the one site where, you know, with the convenience sites, like Jerry said, that a lot of people depend on those for their garbage hauling and just a reminder every week that, of the confusing elements in government and, you know, why one bag costs one thing and one bag costs another thing, and what size is the bag and what size is the bag. It gets kind of confusing after a while. So maybe that's, yeah, if you're all willing to look at that, I'm definitely willing to look at it, to see what we can do there. Maybe even make it open more, maybe make the possibility that the sites could be open more if they didn't have to be manned for somebody to do the collection of money.
Yeah. Well, like I said, there are a lot of different ways that we can slice this apple, and we're more than happy to do the research to give you more information beyond what we provided back in April, just the types of methodologies. We can give you some of that. I will share with you that we do have systems in place within our solid waste program where we monitor at a fairly fine-tuned level the money that's taken in at each site, the amount of tonnage that's taken in, and we do track those revenues to the extent that we know when something's amiss, and we've had to deal with that in the past, unfortunately, when we've identified there might be a leak somewhere.
Do we have security cameras? And as far as what Jerry was speaking of and Dennis?
I'm trying to think of the convenience sites, and the only one I can really think of besides the one that we closed down in New Salem would be the one at, off of Stack Road and Armfield Mill Road.
Armfield, right.
Those are two remote areas, but Piedmont High School, Parkwood High School, there are internet access there through the schools that I would think that maybe that working with them, we could get security cameras at least those two locations, and should have them at every location, probably for our protection as well as for the protection of the employees there. I would think that, like an instance where the lady was hit at the landfill by the car, where we could have something that would record what was going on and any other sites that we have that I'm not thinking of that...
White Store, I think is the other, Armfield and White Store are the two most remote...
Yeah, White Store Road.
Most remote locations.
Armfield Mill Road.
Yeah, Armfield Mill, so those three locations. But with all the internet, you know, we're down at the range, we have internet.
Well, I will say also at Austin Chaney, we don't really have good service down there either.
Yeah, through wireless internet, we couldn't do that, through new technologies and...
I know I have wireless in my home, and I wouldn't promote it.
Yeah. Well, better than nothing.
It's better, it's, I think that's their slogan.
Right. So maybe we could, maybe we could figure out something with getting cameras for security and...
Yes, sir. We've had those discussions for those same reasons.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. We'll be back.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know there's been a lot of discussion, but there's been no action, official action of the board to staff, so if the board would not mind, if we could have some specific direction so we know exactly what it is we're looking at and we need to bring back.
I heard several issues. One, alternative methods of receipt, the stickers. And Jerry, you had...
I simply, and I'll make the motion that you explore a cashless method of taking trash at the convenience sites. Make it simple.
Is that amended to the other processes? Look at that as well? Not just cash is what I'm saying, the stickers and receipt.
I won't say stickers because I won't limit Jeff and his ability to explore what method that cashless method is. But I'll certainly friendly amend it to include the safety aspect of it, if we want to do that.
Okay. Because I think the stickers are a cashless method anyways, right? I mean, any kind of...
Stickers, bags, card, whatever.
Another thing, Jeff, there would be some savings if we do go cashless. You had one screen there of what we spend, bringing the money in, paying mileage, counting the money. If we, I forget what it was, but it was quite substantial.
Yes, sir. I think you'd probably look at exchange of costs in some areas and then some savings in other areas, the cost of any software that you might employ, how that software is utilized, whether it's, you know, a web-based system or more localized downloadable type system. So all those things will bear what the actual cost of implementation would be and ongoing maintenance of those type products. So that would be something we want to look at as part of this same action item.
Okay.
Upfront and ongoing cost.
Commissioner Rush?
I apologize for, when people track, even with receipts though, right now, they can't track what their yearly consumption or use of the convenience sites is.
Not by the individual, no, no, sir.
Yeah, because that would be helpful, you know, in thinking of what Jerry said with the cashless method of being able to identify that person coming in, how many times they come in, you know, if they're using it on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, that would be interesting. How much...
I think probably a sticker system would be the only way that you could track that level of usage. Cash or cashless, you're not going to be able to track that unless it's something we're accounting for each time that person comes.
How much do we estimate that a person, on average, uses the, is it $100 a year or $50 a year or...
It varies based on the need-demand.
So there's not an average number of customers versus...
Well, we don't track that. We track tonnage, we track amount, and then we calculate out what the cost per tonnage should be, so that gives us an idea. Generally, each month, we know what we should expect, and we budget that way, but in terms of the individual users, we don't track what the average person brings in on a, with any frequency.
But they could track it with this new receipt system. The customer themselves probably could.
If the customer information was part of that receipting process, then you could.
Because we have a, when we used it more often, you know, we'd just take change out of the cup holder or whatever and pay for it, and you start thinking about that person who could actually hire a pickup service for the same amount of money that they're taking it to the dump, you know, to the local convenience center.
Yes, sir. And we have some of that activity at Austin Chaney.
So what I'm hearing is a motion for cashless and evaluate security options, a fair assessment. Okay. We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
We'll be back with the board's staff.
Next, we have, under new business, we have the Big Sweep Proclamation. And a little bit of background, the NC DOT holds two large litter sweep initiatives per year, one in April and one in September. Solid Waste has been working on anti-litter initiatives with a local community group. We have the queen here. The Board of Commissioners, recent approval of double fees for unscrewed loads of debris destined for our solid waste management center has been a positive impact on the roads leading to that facility. The proclamation encourages residents to get involved in grassroots efforts to combat litter, and the sign of proclamation will be presented to the litter busters. Loretta, if you'll come up. Come through here.
And then Sally, that might, he's my left-hand man, my right-hand man is sick tonight.
I want to present a proclamation of Union County Board of Commissioners, whereas Union County is rich in beauty and natural resources, whereas Union County Board of Commissioners strives to improve the quality of life in Union County in many ways, including through enhanced community awareness, education, and collaboration on projects that keep our environment clean and free of debris. Beauty of our neighborhoods and public spaces instills pride and a sense of ownership in our community, you're a good contributor. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation alone picked up an average of four point six tons of litter each month from Union County Roadways in the county fiscal year of two thousand nineteen. Whereas the residents of Union County realize additional cleanup efforts help display pride in our community, and whereas the people should be able to live in a healthy and sustainable environment, and whereas the residents of Union County have a civic responsibility to protect and care for the beauty and natural resource of Union County. Whereas the countywide cleanup campaign will encourage the residents to participate ongoing improvement of their community environment through joining grassroots local groups such as litter busters or adopt a highway programs. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation has identified September fourteenth through twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, a statewide fall litter sweep. Now, the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby claim September fourteenth through twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, as Union County bugs sweep and urges Union County residents to participate in the activities to commemorate this event and help make Union County a more beautiful place to live and play.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I want to announce that on Saturday, the fourteenth of September, is Litter Buster's Big Sweep, so anybody can join us, the new MLK Food Line Store, and we'll put you to work.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you need a motion to adopt that proclamation?
Yes, we do.
I'm making that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
First time I ever had my pictures taken with a lady with a crown on.
Well, you, you're not going to forget this, are you?
You have a nice evening. Next we have Comprehensive Transportation Plan Amendments: Recommendations to Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Bjorn, if you'll help us with that, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Watson. This is an update to a presentation you heard earlier in the summer where you opened a thirty-day public comment period on a series of amendments to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan throughout Union County. This was completed in late July. We did have one amendment based on public feedback. It was also requested by the town of Weddington because it was found within their jurisdiction. Tonight, you're being asked to formally request these amendments to the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, who maintains this map. They would process this in September, October, ideally make the motion in November, and then it'll go to the Board of Transportation where they would make a concurrent adoption of these amendments in early two thousand twenty, and that's when the map would be updated. So, these amendments are throughout the county. You've seen them before. I'll spend a little bit more time on the one that was modified based on public feedback. So, we have Marvin and the Weddington area towards Waxaw. And here in Weddington, this is a Manda Drive extension, had a modification based on a segment that was already built, so this black line would be the deletion. Then in, also in Weddington, you have two sections here extending to the east, forest lawn over towards Potter. This section in the Walden Lane neighborhood, it was originally to the north through some residential homes and did not include the segment of Walden Lane, and so it was intended to actually follow Walden Lane and then extend to the east, but the residents learned about this and were very concerned about the alignment going through their neighborhood. Both the town and the, and us explained that this would be only ever implemented if their neighborhood and the adjacent land were to be developed or redeveloped. There's a large lot neighborhood from the seventies, average lot size of five acres or more, and individual residents as well as members of the board for their HOA called and expressed some concern, and based on that feedback, we deferred to the town. They took action in August, said, yes, please remove this, we don't want to amend to, to shift it to the south, we want it just removed. So, that's what's being reflected here to the east between forest lawn and Potter. Section is shifted south off of Moorfield. This is remaining based on Weddington feedback, just like this section through Walden Lane would only ever be built if development occurred that would incorporate the land here, and it's really just feedback for when development were to occur, which is the same recommendation here, or the same scenario here, rather, that would only occur through the development process. Do you have any questions about these amendments for this specific area of the county?
I have any questions?
Okay. The other areas were deletions based on feedback as well as amendments based on changes largely due to the Monroe Expressway. So, this is an Indian Trail, more Indian Trail, towards Weddington, I'm sorry, towards Monroe. This was due to the Monroe Expressway. This was split due to the Monroe Expressway, so it's being recommended for deletion. This is north of Wingate. And so, the requested action is to endorse these amendments and request CARPO adoption of the amended CTP as requested by Union County.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to endorse amendments and request CARPO adoption of the amended CTP?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bjorn. Next item is item number fifteen, historic courthouse renovation, phase one, request to reject bids. Commissioner Aikmas?
Yes. Just as, as a point of clarification, I guess I'm a little confused by this. Perhaps the manager or Michelle can explain what exactly transpired here. So, it looks like we went, we went out and we assigned a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar portion of the project budget to this roofing, but the bid came in at three million six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So, if I understand this correctly, we're going to take, is the six hundred and fifty included in the million four ninety from the budget, or is that in addition to? So, what is the total spending on this roof that we're looking for?
Good evening.
Commissioner Aikmas, we have Mr. Chris Boyd here.
All right, Chris, I'll entertain your comments.
Absolutely. Chris, Chris is very familiar with this project and the costs associated with it.
Yeah, sure. Just to give you a little bit of background on the project, in two thousand seventeen, the county hired Walter Robbs to perform a, a study, which included structural assessment and some programming uses of the facility and what renovation requirements would be. From that study, Walter Robbs assigned the project in three phases. The first phase was this six hundred and fifty thousand dollar roofing project. The second phase was the next phase down, which was windows, doors, next level kind of building envelope type projects, and then a final larger renovation. From those estimates from the study, the board approved as part of the capital plan the first two phases. The first one was funded at, I think it was eight hundred and fifty. The six fifty actually was our construction budget available for the project, but you got soft costs, including designer costs and things like that, that build that budget, budget back up to the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think was the number that was approved in the first phase. The second phase was funded at whatever the difference is in the one point four, one point four nine zero million dollars.
You've lost me now. So, the fact, phase one was eight fifty, phase two is a million dollars?
No. Phase two was a difference which would be six hundred and some thousand dollars. So, a total that has been funded in our capital improvement plan is one point four million dollars.
Okay.
And so, from that study, those estimates were put together. We began the first phase in two thousand eighteen, actually before I got here. They decided to do a pre-qualification of contractors process. While I was here, we started that process. So, because this is a historic type project, it has some really particular scope of work, which includes slate tile replacement, which generally you want somebody who's done that work before. So, the state allows a pre-qualification of contractors process. And so, we went through that process for, it took about six months to pre-qualify contractors. Unfortunately, we only ended up with two qualified contractors. And so, on bid day, which was June twenty-seventh of this year, we only had one contractor show up to bid, and he bid three point, three point six one eight million dollars. And so, we had originally budgeted from the designer's estimate, six hundred and fifty dollars, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a construction budget.
Okay, I guess here's where my concern is. If the designer's budget is that far off on the roof, how far off are we going to be on the rest of this project?
Well, we're concerned too, and we don't have a lot of confidence right now in, in what the numbers are, but after talking to the designer, we talked through several things that we think happened on bid day. Number one is you had one contractor bid. That one contractor was only bidding against one other contractor, so we think that, that the competition wasn't there for the project. There was an issue with the bid duration, and so we had a nine-month construction window. After talking to the designer, the contractor requested a twelve-month construction window, but we, you know, at bid day, you're, you've got your specs of what they are, you can't change them on bid day. We, because we didn't have any competition, we feel like the best way to move forward is reject this bid, and that's what we're asking tonight, is that the board reject this bid, we go back out and do the re-qualification process again, but we beat down the, you know, the doors on every contractor source that we can to get better competition and basically rebid the project again. We don't, we don't anticipate doing any scope changes, but we will change the pre-qualification process to make it easier for contractors to qualify to bid on this project. There's a particular type of slate that, that's installed at the courthouses of Vermont Slate, and the pre-qualification process was really strict in that you had to have done Vermont Slate work before, and typically slate contractors, if they've done Vermont Slate, they can do Rhode Island Slate, they can do a lot of different slates, so we're going to remove that, some, change some of those pre-qualification requirements in order to increase our competition on the project.
And, and so, are we still looking to fall within that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, sir.
So, now we're looking at spending one point four on just the roof?
We're, we're ass- That's one of the things tonight is we want approval to add up to, or add funds to bring the total project budget up to one point four million.
So, add an additional eight hundred and forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And so, once we do that, and let's say we, we get a bid at one point four nine.
Yeah.
We do that, how much is left to renovate that building?
There's nothing left and there's, there was, there was no funding for the larger renovation-
Okay.
-in our capital plan.
Okay.
It's actually, I think, next year in the, in the CIP.
Okay. I, I guess my ma-
But the issue, to your point, is that we will not have any money to do the phase two.
Right.
So, we'll be basically, potentially, depending on what comes in at bid day, we're potentially going to be using the planned phase one and phase two funds for just phase one.
Okay. So, would it, does it not make more sense to go and have the designer give us a more true estimate of what this is actually going to cost?
Honestly, I don't have a lot of confidence in the, the estimates that we've gotten from our designers. You see, we are on-
Yeah, I see that.
On, on bid day.
But is that from every designer or just this one in particular?
Well, I can't say, I, I don't know. We are talking through some other options. And, you know, I came forward to board before to talk about CM at Risk. And one of the things that I think we need to consider is using CM at Risk on this project. It's not typically large enough, this, this project budget's not usually large enough to support a CM at Risk project, but I think that if we brought in a contractor to help us through, you know, one of the other things is that we don't have any bid alternates on this project as it's designed currently. So, we don't have the ability to value engineer. It's just a hard bid and that's what you've got. But if we brought in CM at Risk, we could actually work through or work to the budget versus, you know, not knowing what, what we're going to get on bid day. So, we're investigating that now.
So, so let's say we spend a million four ninety fixing the roof.
Yeah.
Next year's CIP, we're looking for how much roughly?
I think it's about four million dollars to renovate the total-
And that's-
-total facility. I don't have that in front of me, but-
That's phase two, or is that finished?
That's phase three, that's, that's for phase three. So, we'd have to adjust that in this year's CIP based on what this bid comes back as, if the board, you know, once we bring the contract to you, you know, if you approve that to move forward or not.
So, it'd be the four million plus the million four ninety?
That's right.
So, it'd be five point five million dollars to-
That's right.
-renovate the historic courthouse?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Including phase two, sir, don't, don't forget that-
That's including phase two, which we're not going to accomplish potentially if the bid comes in at one point four.
Right, I'm saying the finished product-
No, sir, that, that finished product is-
Tell me the rest of it.
That's good. So, the finished product would have to include whatever the phase two cost would be, because that's what Chris was telling you is, he's asking for one.
We're taking the funds from phase two-
That is correct.
And putting it in phase one. So, what are, what's the funds for phase two then?
That'll have to be adjusted in the CIP and increase the amount of the four million dollars to whatever the designer-
What did we have set aside for phase two now? The eight hundred and forty thousand?
Around that, it may have been six hundred.
It was like six forty, but again, are we confident that that is an accurate number?
I'm not now.
Yeah, I'm not confident either, honestly.
So, probably closer to six, six to six and a half million to-
Yeah, I would-
Restore the courthouse, all right.
I would think so. The other options are to stop, start the project over, hire a different design team. We could also hire a cost estimator or a cost consultant to come in and give us some, you know, what I would consider more accurate cost.
I, I guess here's where I'm at. So, if the million four ninety gets us a roof-
Yeah.
-that stops all the leaking in the building, that stops further deterioration, does it not?
That's right.
Okay? So, if we spent that million four ninety to put the roof on, then we have some time that we could go out and get some maybe more accurate bidding? go out and get some maybe more accurate bidding.
We can.
On this?
Yeah.
Maybe look at some different alternatives to.
We can, we can investigate the delivery method for the next phase or phases. We can, you know, roll the next two phases into one phase so that we're not, you know, we're not making this a three, you know, phase project. We can make it a two-phase project, just roll phase two and phase three into one, the next phase, which we'll call phase two. And determine what the best delivery method is on it. It's a larger, you know, it's a larger project.
Sure.
So there'll be definitely some options on delivery method for that.
Yeah, because I, I'm not comfortable signing up for six and a half million dollars. I'm comfortable with putting a roof on the building to stop further deterioration, but I think we need to revisit our delivery method, our bidding, and all, all the different facets here, because I think everybody in this county has an appreciation for the historic value of that building. But I don't know that our taxpayers want to jump in on a six and a half million dollar construction if, if we're not comfortable with the bids that we're getting. Are we just throwing good money after bad?
Yeah, that's why we're coming to reject this bid tonight, because we're not, we're not even entertaining the idea that we find 3.4 million dollars to do that work, because we don't think it's inaccurate, a real, a real bid.
So do you think the million 490 is going to cover the roofing, or is that, is the roofing going to fall somewhere between 650 and 1.5, 1.5?
I think it's going to fall between 650 and 1.5.
So it's not going to be the 1.5?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Yeah, unfortunately, all I've got to go on right now is what our designers have supplied as a, as a cost estimate.
Yeah.
And that's what we're working from. And after talking to the designer, we feel like that 3.6 million dollar bid was, you know, an outlier, so to speak, because we didn't have any competition on.
Okay.
On bid day.
You see, you see my concern. I mean, when your, when your bid comes in at 41% of, of the maximum amount that you've allocated for two phases of this project, that's rather.
I see your concern.
Eye-opening.
Yes. We didn't say it was eye-opening on bid day.
I'm sure it was. All right, well, I, I'm good with that. I, I'll make a motion, then we'll reject all bids for Historic Courthouse renovation phase one project received on June 27th, authorize staff to prequalify contractors and rebid the project. Now, that said, do I need to add to my motion that we revisit everything else included with this project?
I think that would help us move in the right direction, yes, sir.
Commissioner. I'll, I'll put it out there, and I'll leave it to my colleagues to decide if that's the direction they want to go. But I'll, I'll add to my motion to start the, to rebid the entire project and, and get more accurate bidding on that, and perhaps look at a different method of delivery on that project as well, so.
Commissioner Aitken, I agree with you, everything you said. Question, Chris, what kind of roofs on it now?
It's a slate roof.
And that slate roof.
Specifically a Vermont slate.
And that slate roof failed?
Well, it has leaks. The whole roof's not, not failed, but there are leaks, there's broken slate, there's issues with, you know, the, the way some of the slate has flashed itself, you know, how you, you know, how you lay it and all that, so there's some issues there. So there, the roof needs to be replaced.
Is there any other things, any other kinds of roofs we could go back with that would look like slate that possibly offer less mo, a cost?
Because of the historic nature of that project, we actually have to go through Historic Society, you know, with approval when we, we start talking about substitutions. But to your point, and I was talking earlier about potentially this being a CM project, is that we could ask for options on product. You know, there, I'll give an example. Previous job, we had a terracotta facade that was deteriorating, and we ended up with four options, and they all looked like terracotta. But they were, you know, ranging from original terracotta all the way down to a plastic. And so there are options. Now, whether or not we can get those through the Historic Society, and whether or not they maintain the historic integrity of the facility, I, I can't say that at this point. But I think if we were to look at some options, you know, but that's hard to do on a, on a hard bid job, well, it's impossible to do if you didn't, you know, spec it as a, as any alternatives, and we didn't get that from our design team.
When the existing courthouse, I mean, when it was renovated in, I'm going to say the eighties.
Yeah, eighties.
Was there a membrane installed under that slate roof?
Not that I'm aware of. The, the detail on the demolition doesn't show a membrane under that.
That's what it needs though, isn't it?
A membrane could help. You know, there, there, I don't think we have a membrane in this, you know, in this scope of work. But it potentially could help. But I know our design, the designers selected, they had extensive background in this type of work. And while I, I'm not confident in our estimates that we've got, I am pretty confident in, in their scoping of the work, you know, what, you know, their recommendations are as far as repairs and, and, and changes. But I, I don't think we have a membrane.
Is there any way of sealing the slate roof that's on it now?
No. No, I mean, there, there, there are, you know, missing slate pieces, there, I mean, there, there are many pieces of slate that have to be replaced in order to maintain, you know, the full envelope. And so once you start replacing pieces, you know, then you start, you start having, you know, mismatched colors, a lot of different things that are going to really impact, you know, the integrity of the look of that, that roof.
Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you. Last, I was going to ask similar questions. Are we limited by City Monroe or Historic Society on what we can and can't do? Just out of curiosity, and, and, yeah, I think it would shock us to see how much it would be to, to, to remove that building in, in its entirety. It'd probably be more than it would be to renovate it. Bring that number to us.
Okay.
What would it cost to completely demolish that building and, and remove it from the site? And if it's five to 10 million dollars, you know, I'm definitely with Commissioner Aitken, the, the price on this is way too high. When we look at the schools and say, you know, you, you know, you need to be mindful of the dollars, we have to be mindful as well. But that means all alternatives we need to look at, and especially different materials, different products that would be more cost efficient and, and, you know, work longer for a longer period of time, because if that slate roof's not going to work for many years into the future. When the last renovation, last re-roofing was done when, the eighties?
The, you had renovation in the late seventies, early eighties, and then Hugo came through in 89 and virtually ripped a roof off the building. So you had, yeah, it had to be redone at that time also.
What was the cost then?
I have no idea. I wasn't, I wasn't around to know. I don't know. I, I've never heard anybody say. I would imagine it would have been an insurance claim, but.
Hey, we've got another hurricane coming.
There's, there's a good bit of sheet metal work that needs to be done on that. Yeah, it's not just roof, I wanted to clarify, it's not just roof work.
Right.
And so actually, it's, it's some structural work within the clock tower. You know, there, there are beams and bands and structural members that need to be adjusted, tightened, a lot of different things to secure that, you know, the structural integrity of the roof too.
So one way or the other, we're going to have to do something, whether we remove the building or fix the building.
Yes.
Something's going to be done.
And just to be clear, I am not advocating for the removal of that building. I just want to be very clear before we go lighten up Facebook, we have to save the historic courthouse. That is not what Commissioner Aitken is proposing tonight.
And, and I'm, and, and I'm not proposing that we tear it down either, but would be curious as to the cost associated with, with that as well, because some, one way or the other, we're going to have to do something with that building.
And I think the point is, we want to make sure that what we do is economical and in the best interest of the tax bank system, so.
I agree.
Commissioner Aitken, would you consider amending your motion to include instructions for also to look at alternative materials that might facilitate?
Would that not be included in the delivery method? Could you not, would that not fall under that? I will if that's what you need. What do you want? What do you want this motion to be?
I, I just want these bids to be rejected so that we can move to the next.
We've done that, but I want to lay some outlining.
Yeah.
Specifications for the next.
Yeah, the next phase, the next phase, investigate the, the most efficient and economical delivery method for, for phase two and potentially phase three.
Then consider my motion amended to include such.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Next, we have item 11, the Yadkin River Water Supply Project Permit and Services Amendment to the Task Order 2012-02 with HDR Engineering Incorporated. Mr. Rushing?
Yes, I asked this to be pulled similar to the reason that Commissioner Aitken has had discussed the courthouse. We were going from 138 approved thousand to we're going to another additional 100,000. Is that correct? Is that what we're?
That's correct.
That's correct. What's causing a doubling of the cost? What, what is, what's costing us so much?
Mr. Hung Yi has detail on that. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to answer your question, Commissioner Rushing. We had originally budgeted 130,000 for HDR to take us through the permitting process for the lake use permit for the Yadkin project. In budgeting that amount, we had budgeted a certain amount of length of time for us to go through the permitting process. And we have exceeded that time, and we still haven't gotten a permit. We've had to go back again and again to answer questions. And so we are still trying to get a per, lake use permit so that we can proceed with the project. Right now, the lake use permit has received agency review, and we've received those, those comments, and we've sent them to Duke Energy, who are, that, who now has 30 days to review those comments before that gets packaged and sent to the, to FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, so that they can improve the use of Lake Tillery as a water source for the Yadkin project. We think that'll take, well, timeline is Duke has 30 days to review, we get 30 days to package it all together, send it to the federal government. They get up to a year to review everything that we've sent them, all the documentation, before they make a final ruling. And we have HDR with us every way, every step of the process to oversee the review, the documentation, and answer any questions the federal government may have with regard to our permits, our documentation, all the engineering specifications that we put together as part of our reasoning and justification for use of the permit. So the additional 100,000 dollars, we believe, will cover any and all expenses between now and us getting the lake use permit from the federal government, so we can continue with the Yadkin project.
Did HDR not consider that when they gave us the price of 138,000?
Oh, honestly, I can't answer that question, but when we, we budgeted for a certain amount of time with HDR, and we have exceeded that timeline for getting the lake use permit, we are, we have been working on the permit for more than, I think, more than five years.
It's, right, it was my understanding that these permits should have been, we should have already kind of had them in hand. Whose fault was it? Did we drop the ball, or did HDR drop the ball?
Well, I, I don't think that dropping the ball is the right phrasing of it, other than to say that it has been a tremendous back and forth between all of the local governments, Stanley County, Montgomery County, the town of Norwood, the Duke Energy, and the federal government in terms of trying to get all these, all the questions answered, all those settlements settled, and all the legal issues resolved, so that we can continue. And so it's just added time that we didn't, we originally didn't plan for.
And that was, you know, we've been told up until this year, I think, that everything was on for 2021, and now we're being told 2023, 2024. Is that still the timeline that we're looking at?
I will say that the lake use permit is pretty much what's driving the timeline right now. It is September 2019. If, on the schedule that we are on, we think that we'll get the permit from the federal government sometime next year. And that pretty much drives the construction of the project. So we are, we're, you know, roughly about 12 months behind in terms of where we thought we would be with the lake use permit and, and in terms of designing and constructing the project.
So 138,000 dollars, we, we originally budgeted that for the lake use permit, getting the permits for lake use, correct?
Yes, sir.
And nobody's been working on getting a lake use permit until the lawsuits were over?
I'm, I'm, I'd have to answer, I'd have to get you information on that, I'm not certain.
Is anybody from HDR here?
No one from HDR is present today.
Maybe we could put this off then to the next meeting, because I'd like to find out what we spent the 138,000 dollars on if it wasn't getting the lake use permit.
Well, well, if you're asking the question, what did we spend it on? We spent it on them working with us to get all the documentation together that's required by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, working with Duke Energy, working with the Army Corps of Engineers to put all the documentation together and answer all the questions, actually put the package together, several hundred pages, 600 pages of documents.
So that wasn't part of the original 138,000 dollars?
That, well, yes, sir, that was part of the 130, original 138,000 dollars. What we're asking for the, for the additional 100,000 is to take us through the remainder of the process in terms of shepherding the package through Duke Energy and then through the federal government for the next year.
Has there been any change requests to the process that would have created this extended period of time? Because I assume that the 138,000, that was the process to take us from starting all the, to get the permits, to having the permits in hand. What change request drove the extra time? Did we not respond like we should? Did we not provide the data that was required?
But.
We're not trying to give you a rough time.
No, I understand. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give you the answers that I know the answers to, and I, and I think Michelle's waiting.
I'll help you just a bit.
Thank you.
It's probably not fair to ask Hung all those questions since he wasn't here, but one of the primary drivers would be the litigation that we were involved in, which took, you know, more than a year. Most of these agencies were not willing to do anything for us until there was no controversy at hand. And so that was the biggest driver of the delay, and this was the litigation that we were involved in.
As, as I recall, our meeting with Duke Energy, that was the case with them, even though HDR had done a fair amount of work in design, and had started the process of providing those designs to the other agencies for comment, Duke would not accept any of that information prior to the litigation being resolved. And since that time, anytime that there have been any design changes to the intake, which would have been, I would imagine, extra pumps for the other county, but any, any design changes to that intake, any design, any construction changes inside what they call the FERC boundary required all of those agencies to comment again. And that is the reason we had to go through the latest round of comments. There were some grading changes inside the FERC boundary that required 30 different agencies to comment on before the application could be finalized and provided to Duke Energy, and that's where we're at today.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we had, we, we had them prepare documents for 138,000 dollars, and then those documents aren't any good because of the changes made?
No, they are good. They've, they've been used and they've been modified along the way, but they've had to be modified several different times, re-reviewed. Duke Power has reviewed them, they've sent them back for comments. This has been a back and forth process, and this is the way this process apparently generally works. It is a back and forth and a back and forth until everybody has their questions answered about the specific designs and the impacts before. And again, this is, this is Union County filling out this application on behalf of Duke Energy. Duke Energy has to review it, and then it becomes Duke's application to the federal government to, so that we're allowed to have this water withdrawal from Lake Tillery.
Well, I'll make the motion that we have, we approved the additional 100,000 dollars, but with the understanding that these costs keep escalating. We, we heard from. But, with the understanding that these costs keep escalating, we heard from our engineering partners that we were looking at an additional ninety-five million dollars for this project just a month or so ago. Very concerned, again, that the costs keep going up, and at what point do we, again, like Commissioner Aitken was talking about, you know, what point do we look at and say, wait a minute, we can't just keep doubling the value every time we talk. So, again, I think the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars should have sufficed. I'll make the motion to increase to additional one hundred thousand dollars to accept the scope of services as shown in Amendment to Task Order 2012-02. The HDR Engineering, the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and authorize County Manager to approve the Amendment to Task Order pending legal review.
Initial rate.
So, everything's already been submitted to Duke, right?
Yes, sir.
Everything's ready to go to FERC?
Duke has thirty days to review all the changes to the documentation.
And if they don't change it, it goes right on to FERC?
If they don't change it, it goes to the federal government, yes, sir.
So, this hundred thousand is for work they've already done, and they want payment for it?
Well, no, this hundred thousand is to cover us for the, between now and whenever we get the lake use permit. Because the FERC may have questions. They may have comments, they may ask us to change something, in which case it would require us to come back and respond to their questions and whatever comments that they may have.
It actually, I'm sorry, it actually is for some work that has occurred up until now. I would, I would think, there has been some work that is over the hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So, there's, I don't have the amount, but there actually has been some work that's over the amount of the original contract. I want to make that clear. It's not just for future-
Was it an estimate or a contract?
I don't have the, I don't have the number, but they have performed some work beyond the original hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Was the one thirty-eight a contract or an estimate?
It was our budgeted amount for the project. We're paying for their time. I haven't looked at their bills, but I'm assuming they're based on per-hour costs for their staff.
So, it wasn't a contract for a-
It is a contract for their time.
But, for a total job.
So, it's safe to say the unexpected litigation has added additional time and cost to what we have budgeted, and so that's why we're asking for the additional-
Correct. And as Mr. Matthews just said, and I believe it's in the agenda item, that this would cover us through August of 2020, anticipated costs through 2020.
And we believe that by that point in time, we should have the lake use permit from the federal government.
We have a motion?
And it's my understanding that it's up to one hundred thousand. It doesn't...
It could be less.
It could be eighty thousand, it could be fifty thousand. Right. But, we're just authorizing the manager to go up to a hundred thousand. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have appointments to boards and committees. Region F Agent Advisory Committee, Patricia Connelly. Term on the committee has expired. She has submitted her application for reappointment and is eligible for reappointment. Members are limited to serving three consecutive two-year terms or a total of six years. Ms. Connelly is, has completed her second full term. Do I have a motion to reappoint Patricia Connelly?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All four?
Aye.
All right, the next item, and there's a reason we're going through them one by one. The Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Laura Bounder, Regional Abusman, Centralina Area Agency on Agent, has notified the Clerk's Office that Amy Debrum and Sharon Debrum have completed the requirement orientation, are eligible for appointment by the Board of Commissioners. Applications has been received for Amy and Sharon Debrum. Debrum. Do I have a motion?
This is a request to appoint both of them?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC. The following vacancies exist on Union County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. A local sheriff or designee, Sheriff Sergeant Chris Black of the Union County Sheriff's Office has submitted an application. Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Black? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Member of Faith Community. Application's been received from David Gausia and Jonathan Ash. Both Mr. Gausia and Mr. Ash are eligible to serve. There are two Commissioner appointee vacancies on this council. Should the board want to consider, Mr. Gausia and Mr. Ash to fill one of those vacancies?
Motion to approve Mr. Ash and for the Faith, Member of Faith Community and Mr. Gausia as the Commissioner appointee.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Person of age under eighteen, application received from Mato Woods of Weddington High School. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Woods? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Discussion, please.
Sir, okay.
These positions are filled by, normally by high school students. And if anybody does have a student that's interested in doing that, these are hard to fill. We used to meet at Cata High School, which made it a little bit easier to identify and have a student from, two students from that school. But, now that we meet at the library, it has been a little bit more difficult to get a student. So, if any students are out there, scouts or otherwise that would like to participate in this, we have a Wednesday morning meeting once a month, and it's at the Monroe Library right now, so.
How many more open positions do you have?
I think one more opening.
One more?
Yeah, there's two, there's two positions for that. There is some discussion of maybe changing that position to maybe an up the age a little bit. But, if we do have high school students that are scouts or in needing of, I guess, some public service time, community service time, that would be a good option for them.
Okay. We had a motion for Mr. Woods to, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Two Commissioner appointees, applications received from Ann Marie Woods and Jesse Lindberg. Ms. Lindberg also serves on the Human Services Board.
I make a motion. We accept the nomination for, or application from Ann Marie Woods to fill the second Commissioner appointee.
Okay. There's two of those we can do.
We just filled one of them, didn't we?
Yeah, we filled one.
Okay, all right. All right. Any discussion? Mr. Woods, for Ms. Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next, we have County Managers' Questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you are aware, the governor has declared a state of emergency in the state of North Carolina pending impacts from Hurricane Dorian that is making its way up the East Coast. Wanted to let you know that this morning, we held a briefing for Union County staff, their directors, management. Not that we think that there are going to be any immediate impacts in Union County. We do think we're going to get some wind and maybe some rain. But, we're using this opportunity to make sure that we are prepared for these types of events that occur. It's a good opportunity for every, everyone on staff to take an inventory of the things that they need to ensure that we are able to continue to provide the public services that people expect of us. I would like to make you aware that we have had one member of our staff, Deputy Fire Marshal John Williams, has been deployed to Hyde County. John is part of an Emergency Operations Center team. And he, along with two members from Charlotte Fire Department, were deployed at the request of the State Emergency Management Office to Hyde County. Their purpose is to relieve the Hyde County staff and their Emergency Operations Center, because of the limited number of staff, trained staff, they have to operate that center. They'll be operating on twenty-four hour shifts. And so, the, the state of North Carolina has had the foresight of training individuals from different counties so that we can support, one end of the state can support the other end of the state when we have these type of events, and John will be out there. And I will say this, I believe, as Fire Marshal Kevin Rigoli was, and I were discussing earlier today, we've never seen the state of North Carolina pre-stage resources like it has for this event. This is the kind of thing that, you know, is a textbook, textbook planning operation. And I believe that most counties across the state of North Carolina are taking advantage of the opportunity to make sure that they are prepared as such. The other thing that I would like to remind the board of is Farm City Week is going to be September fourteenth through the twenty-first with many activities that week. All of those are listed online at the Union County Cooperative Extension, on the Union County Cooperative Extension website. And we encourage everybody to participate in those activities this coming week. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Ray?
No comments.
Commissioner Simpson?
No further comments.
Commissioner Rushing?
No comments.
Commissioner Aitken?
No comments.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and also, please, keep in your prayers all those that are in the path or have been in the path of this event. And Union County steps up to the plate. I think Mr. Rigoli and Camden were assisting our neighbors the other day. And a lot of times, our citizens don't realize how Union County contributes to the region around us. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor? Never had a discussion on that.